This conference will now be recorded.
Access will be given.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
So that we can go through, we can go through that meanwhile, right?
Yes, those will be provided.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, before we start understanding the regular session number one or our actual training from today onwards, we need to make sure that we are tuning ourselves mentally that you are going to be a FICO consultant. And as a FICO consultant, whatever you do in the project, right from day one, you have to slowly inject in your mind. It's not that initially you will understand SAP FICO configuration. Later on, I will try to understand what is real time, what is project and all. This approach is not going to work out at all. Please make sure right from day one, though it is a little tricky, though it is a little difficult for us to understand, it is still fine because every topic I will be repeating a minimum two or three times. Each and every topic I will repeat minimum two or three times. As I know, at one time, this is not possible for anybody to understand. No matter how effectively I teach, how effectively I explain it to you at your side, even if I am on the receiver's side, it will be difficult for me to understand in one go and then feel comfortable confident. So you do not have to worry about anything in case if you are not able to understand. If you are not able to understand, if you are getting a confusions, make sure you will get your doubts, confusions clarified at the end of the same session. Or on a weekly basis, we will have one exclusive doubts clarification session. These confusions may be there for the initial one or two months maximum. These initial confusions for everybody will be there for the first one month or for the first two months. Everybody please go on this. Okay, these initial confusions are common for the first one month, maximum for the first two months. After two months, there will be no confusion for everybody as you will be confident enough to understand what I am explaining, what is happening in SAP, what you are doing in SAP, how you need to understand SAP. You will be more than comfortable, more than confident in two months' time. Keep in your mind, it takes approximately two months' time for you to feel comfortable, confident on this subject. Don't expect right from day one, you will understand, right from day one, you will start counting the days. Do not count your days. As I said, first one month, you are not going to understand anything. First one month, I am not going to count in your batch or course duration of four month. This first one month effective today is not part of your course duration four month. Because in this one month, what we will do, we will try to understand what is SAP FICO, what a consultant does as a FICO consultant, how projects will happen, what we will do in the project, what kind of projects are there, what is there in SAP, what is there in FI, what is there in CO, what is there in accounting, how our accounting is helping in our FI, in our CO, all these fundamental points, we will try to understand in this one month. So that conceptually, you will have a high level understanding about SAP FICO. Then when we start doing the configuration and all, it is more easier for you to practically relate why you are doing every configuration, why every project is taking lot of time, why everybody is telling SAP FICO is difficult, why I am telling you should not learn SAP FICO configuration alone, you will practically understand, you will practically realize. At that moment, whatever we start doing the practicing, nobody will think about the timing. Because you will practically understand, this is not going to be completed within three months. I am not going to get a job within three months, practically not possible. Do not be under an impression that three months, four months, my batch is over, fifth month, I will be getting the job. It's practically not possible. For that to happen, you will have to put extra efforts which we may not be able to put due to our current activities with whatever we are occupied with. Okay, now, first point that I want everybody to understand is, this is the first point that I want everybody to understand, remember. The moment you are talking about SAP, SAP FICO, you should understand a point called system landscape. When you are talking about a system landscape, first thing here you need to understand SAP log-on pad. When you are talking about system landscape, we should also talk about SAP log-on pad. SAP log-on pad, now this is in case if we are using SAP GUI. SAP log-on pad is required in case if you are using GUI, SAP FURI link, in case if we are using SAP FURI, S4HANA, this is ECC and S4HANA. Meaning, if you are using SAP log-on pad, you will be able to log into SAP for both ECC version and for S4HANA version. In short, SAP log-on pad is used for logging into SAP ECC server, at the same time SAP S4HANA server. When it comes to SAP FURI link, this SAP FURI link is used to log into SAP FURI, which is exclusively applicable for S4HANA system. FURI is not applicable for ECC, FURI is only applicable for S4HANA system. Okay, now as part of a system landscape, as a consultant, you need to understand, this is very important. Now, when you are talking about SAP log-on pad, if I go to my desktop, okay, if you look at my desktop, on my desktop, you can see a icon called SAP log-on. This is your SAP log-on. Okay, this is nothing but SAP GUI, SAP GUI, SAP GUI or SAP log-on pad. People will be calling it with the different things. This is in short SAP icon or SAP log-on pad, SAP GUI or SAP GUI. Double click on it. Okay, you need to double click on it. When you double click on it, you will get, this is pop-up screen opened. Now on this screen, what usually happen? For example, if I take, okay, if I take like this. Those who are not able to hear my voice, please try to rejoin. This could be due to network issues. If you try to rejoin, it will be fine. Or anybody says that they are not able to put, somebody can respond in the chat box to rejoin. Okay, now this is your SAP log-on pad, I am using SAP log-on pad seven seven zero version. Now, whenever you are looking at SAP log-on pad like this, there are two points that we need to keep in our mind. Point number one, here, whatever the screen that I am showing to you, I clicked on shortcut. Okay, now there is only one connection I am able to see here. Here I am able to see only one connection, majority lead whenever we practice, majority lead whenever we practice SAP, if you are practicing for three month, you are practicing for six month, nine month, one year, irrespective of the duration, your SAP log-on pad may contain only a single line like this. Your SAP log-on pad may contain a single line like this, whatever the server that you are using, you may be having that particular line alone. This is not correct. This is not correct. From here, the way you look at the SAP log-on pad should get changed completely. One single line will never be there in any SAP project. One line like this on any SAP log-on pad will not be there with any SAP FICO consultant. If you are learning SAP FICO, you wanted to become a consultant, first point that you should change from your mind is, on your SAP log-on pad, there is no longer a single record like this. No single connection, there will be minimum three connections. There will be minimum three connections. In short, if I click on connections here, you should find link like this. You should find a list like, like this. If you look at any real-time working SAP consultant system, ask them to open their SAP log-on pad and ask them to share this screenshot of this icon. See how many consultants are giving you this screenshot which contains a single line here or a single connection. Nobody will have a single connection, everywhere there are three connections minimum. Now the multiple lines that you are having here is representing a landscape, is representing a landscape. If you go to Excel sheet and when we try to update a system landscape, there are three points or there are three servers, three systems within every client SAP system. First one, you need to understand, development, client. Second one, you need to understand, quality client. Third one, you need to understand, production client. Development, quality, production is what we need to understand, just give me a minute. So, development, quality, production, three client servers will be there. Now you need to understand what you will do in development, what you will do in quality, what you will do in production. First, you should have a clarity that there are three servers in SAP landscape. Of any client that you take, you will find three, development, quality, production. For example, you are working in a project. As a FICO consultant, everybody will tell, I am assigned to a project, I am working in implementation project, I am working in support project, I am working in rollout project, I am working in migration project or enhancement project, upgradation project, X, Y, Z. Whenever somebody is telling, they are talking about projects here, they are talking about projects. These are the terms that you will be frequently hearing, that you will be frequently using the moment you become a consultant. So right from the beginning, when you are used to these terminologies, you feel comfortable, confident. It will not be a surprise tomorrow when you get a job. So it's all about your project only. Everybody will ask how many projects you did, whether you were part of any implementation project, any support project, any rollout project, any enhancement, any upgradation, any migration kind of. Now when somebody is talking about a project, they may be either representing implementation project, support project, rollout project, upgradation project or migration project. Likewise, there are several types of project which we need to understand. Now in each of the project, you will be working for a different client. In every project, you will find a different client. Now terms will be the same, meanings will be different. Terms will be the same, meanings will be different. Here I am writing a client, here also I have listed a client. Here I have listed development client, quality client, production client. Here also I am talking about client. Who is your client in your implementation project? Who is your client in your support project? Who is your client in your rollout project? Who is your client in upgradation project? Or who is your client in your migration project? When you are trying to understand, when you are trying to represent, I am currently working in a implementation project, my client is X, Y, Z. My client is X, Y, Z. Now, for example, when you tell X, Y, Z is your client, I may say Acer Computers is my client or Apple is my client, Pepsi is my client, Toshiba is my client. In short, client can be any organization who is using SAP. Whoever is using SAP and for them, if you are providing your consulting services, they will become your client. Okay, whoever is using SAP and if you are working for their SAP system, you will be represent, you will be telling that the person or the organization who is using SAP is your client. In this example, you are talking about Acer computer and you are working in Acer project. You are telling Acer project because SAP is used by Acer and this Acer is supported or implemented by your company. In your company, you are a FICO consultant, for you, Acer will become a client. You need to understand how you are talking about a client, why you are segregating client is an organization name here. Client is development qualities, production. In this situation, depending on the scenario, same name, same terminology will represent a different meaning. Tomorrow when somebody is asking you these kind of questions, what is, what is client in SAP? Somebody will simply put a question, what is client in SAP? Do not get confused, do not talk the definitions that you find on the Google, you are not supposed to talk. Based on the context, based on the scenario, definition, meaning will get completely changed, you need to understand them. When and how you will understand, only when you know practically how and where we will use it. Accordingly, you can tell in a confident way, else you will end up talking the definition, please avoid it. Okay, you need to understand project, you need to understand the client. These are the points that I am now writing only to put these points in your mind. I want you to start thinking about what are these boys talking about it. I want you to start thinking about it, start getting different doubts, confusions and all. So that all your doubts, confusions will be removed and all this will be replaced with clear information with confidence. If you have confusion, if I am adding something else, in this moment you may feel comfortable. Later on, you will get unnecessary confusion, which you do not want. When I am there, let us get the confusion, let me put this confusion aside and keep it clear-cut information with confidence in your mind. Okay, now, three points that you will have to remember when it comes to client from SAP log-on point of view or SAP landscape point of view, you are talking about development, quality, production. Now you are a FICO consultant, you need to always remember, you are not a user now, you are not a user, you are a consultant. As a consultant in any project, you will have access to three server. As a consultant, in every project, you will have access to three servers or three client. Point number one is your development client. Here I am writing SAP FICO consultant as the access. You are a FICO consultant, I will be explaining the points only with respect to SAP FICO consultant. If it is not related to FICO consultant, if this is not required for FICO consultant, I am not going to talk those point. Meaning, keep in your mind, whatever I am talking, keeping only SAP FICO consultant in mind. So there is no point that this is generalized content, I am not going to talk. I am going to talk points which are practically applicable for you as a FICO consultant, whether you are in a project tomorrow. Don't think, think that this is a generalized content, this is not generically we are talking, we are talking with respect to pure SAP FICO consultant, you should know the activities, things that a FICO consultant is supposed to be aware of. Do not know things in a generic way, instead know the things from your perspective first. Once you are clear with your activities as a FICO consultant, what we will do? Later on, you try to add what everybody is doing on SAP. First make sure as a FICO consultant, you are comfortable, you are confident. Then only think about what is technical, what is MM, what is ST, what they will do. Later on, they will come into the picture. At this stage, you should be focusing only on the activities related to SAP FICO consultant. So in the development system, as a FICO consultant, you will have the access. Similarly, in the quality system also, as a FICO consultant, you will have the access. Similarly, in the production system also, as a FICO consultant, you will have the access. When I tell you will have the access in the development, quality and production, we are representing, you will be able to log in to development system, quality system, production system. Now we are all aware to log into SAP, we are all aware to log into SAP. SAP log-on process, how do you basically log on to SAP? There are three points here, one, two, three and then four. You will have to keep in your mind four points. Point number one is your client. Point number two is your user ID. Point number three is your password. Point number four is your language. Okay, these are the four points that you need to keep in your mind before you log on to any SAP. If you look at this SAP log-on pad, this is your SAP log-on pad. If I want to log on to any client, let me click on anything, for example, if I click on anything. Okay, this is how you will get it. Point number one, as we discussed, it is client. Point number two, user ID. Point number three, password. Point number four, log-on language. Now client number is mandatory, without client number, you will not be able to log into SAP. Now what is this client number you need to understand? That is reason, initially we have listed something called development, quality, production. As we discussed, initially we understood, there is a point called development, quality, production. Only when you know what is development, what is quality, what is production and only when you know what is a system landscape, then only it is possible for you to understand what is this client. Most of the time, we may be practicing SAP from last one month, two month, three month, six months. But whenever you practice in the test server, during your learning, during your practice, during your training, there will be a single client always. In the testing environment, there will be a single client always. It is defaulted the moment you click on it. The moment you click on it, this client number will be defaulted. What we will be using, we will be using only user ID, password. Majority lead, we will be playing with user ID, password, language. Client are defaulted in a training environment. But if you are working in a project, if you are working in a project and you may be working for a client, now you will have to keep in your mind, SAP is an application which cannot be used by a small industries, which cannot be used by a small, small companies because SAP is very cost-effective this one. Meaning, this is very expensive software, very expensive application, not all the companies can afford it. Small, small companies will not be using SAP. Whenever you are talking about SAP FICO, there are two points that you need to keep in your mind. Two points that you need to keep in your mind, I will connect all the dots, whatever I am explaining it now. One is your local client, another one is your global client. Here again, I am talking about client, I am not talking about company, I am talking about client because tomorrow as a consultant, somebody will be asking you, who is your client? Or I may be asking who is, I may be telling, this is my client. Or how to, how many clients you are giving your support or in how many projects you are working? They may be using the client, they may be using a company, they may be using a project. At the end, they are expecting you to tell the company name to whom you are providing your consulting services. When I am talking about a local client, any company who is operating only in one country. Local client is a company who is operating only in one country. Global client is a company who is operating in multiple countries, in short, your IMNC is multinational companies. Most likely, whenever you get a job as a SAP FICO consultant, it is more likely that you will be working on global clients. It is more likely that you will be working on global client, meaning they will be working in multiple countries. For example, you are working on a client called Apple. Let's say you bought the job in X, Y, Z company and they have Apple project and you have been assigned to Apple project. Now you need to provide your consulting services to Apple project. Now you know that Apple is operating in India, Apple is operating in US, Apple is operating in Singapore, China, Japan likewise. There are so many countries where Apple is operating currently. Likewise, you take any company name, you take any client name where SAP is being used. Take any company name where SAP is being used. Now any company name that you take, any company name that you take, most likely more, majority of the companies are global companies, meaning they are present, they are operating their business processing, processes in various countries, maybe more than two countries, more than hundred countries, more than fifty countries, it is quite possible. Now all such clients, wherever they are operating in multiple countries, we will be representing them as global client or IMNC client or multinational client or a big client basically. Okay, now in this situation, what is going to happen? Your client may have different users working from different region. There may be a user working in China, there may be a user working in Singapore, there may be a user working in India likewise. Now some users will have their local language as their official language. Some users will have their local language as their official language because of the country in which they are working. For example, you are working in a country called China. Now in China, they may not be using English, they may be using everything in Chinese only. If you are working, if you are having a user in India, in India, user may not be using your official language. Your official language, though it is Hindi, Telugu, whatever it is, but you may be using English as your official business language. To write any email or whatsoever, you may be using English. Like this, most of the users will be using English only by default. But there are some countries, there are certain places where English will not be used. Instead of English, their local language will be used as their official language. In such a situation, you have to work with or you should know the language also. Now point number one, before you log into SAP, you should know client. You should know client because without client, it is not possible for you to log into SAP. Without client number, if I keep this blank, it is not possible for me to log into SAP because this is mandatory. Now, how do I know what is my client? Here client is not representing your company name. Here client is not representing your company name. Here client is representing your system landscape, whether you want to log into development, quality, production. Whether you want to log into development, quality or production, how system knows what is development, what is production, what is quality? Every system will have a different log-on link or every system will have a different connection properties. How do you define the different connection properties? If you go to SAP log-on pad again, if you look at it, I have so many system servers here. I have so many system servers here, for example, let's say that I am working for a client called Sony. Assume that I am working for a client who is Sony, let's say Sony brand. Now for this Sony, what I need to do, you can replace Sony with any company. Okay, you can replace Sony with any client name, any company name. If I am working for Sony in this example, as we discussed, every system in SAP will have a landscape. This landscape will represent three servers in a common perspective, development, quality, production. You need to understand Sony development is a separate log-on link. Sony quality is a separate log-on link. Sony production is a separate log-on link. Inside the development, there are different servers again. Inside quality, there are different servers again. Inside the production, there are different servers again. Each server is nothing but your client here. Here when you are talking about client, you are representing, is it development client, quality client, production client? Within the development, you may be having sub-clients, meaning development hundred, development two hundred, development three hundred or development hundred, development one twenty, development one thirty and so on. Similarly, in quality also, you may be having quality one hundred, quality two hundred. In production, there may be only production one hundred. Now these client numbers will be there, which you need to understand. Which you need to understand, okay, to log into SAP, just like that I should not log in. There is something called system landscape on my SAP log-on pad, I should have three servers here. With a single server, I don't want anybody to have your SAP log-on pad like this. Nobody is going to have SAP log-on pad with single line, you should strictly have with minimum three lines. Strictly they should be named as development, quality, production. Without this, you are not supposed to log into SAP, this is mandatory. Because tomorrow, right from day one, when you look at SAP system, when you are getting a job, it will be like this only. It will never be a single client, it will always be multiple client. This is nothing but your client from your GUI point of view. In case if you are working on S4HANA system and your client is using FURI application. Now for logging into SAP FURI, this is not required. SAP log-on pad is not required for you to log on to SAP FURI. To log on to SAP FURI, you have to go to browser. Go to your browser, Google Chrome, Microsoft Browser whatsoever. Open the browser. Open the browser. Okay, once you open the browser and from the browser, you will have, everybody knows how to bookmark a page. Everybody knows how to bookmark a page and you will be given the URL link for development. URL link for the quality, URL link for the production. The way you have the connection properties for development, quality, production, in this similar way, you will be provided with URL link. For example. If I click on this URL link. And you need to add this URL link as a connection property bookmark, development, quality, production. When you add like this, only then it is possible practically for you to work on it. Let's say. Let's see if the server is down. Okay, let us go from here. I think this server is currently down. Do I have other link? One nine zero nine, twenty twenty one. This is one nine zero nine. I think these are old IDs that I have to remove from my bookmark. Okay, let me log in here. Before logging into SAP GUI, you need to put client number. For our training purpose, our client number is hundred. Now, user ID, I am giving my user ID. You will have to put password. I am putting my password here. By default, it will be set as English. Press enter. Put your password. Continue. This is your SAP logon pad. Let me click on SAP Fury Launchpad icon from here. So that I will be redirected to Fury screen from here. Click on this and put this. Okay, this is the screen where you need to log on in the system. If you look at the point here. If you look at the point here, I was talking about four points to log on to SAP. I was talking about four points to log on to SAP. One is your client, two is your user ID, three is your password, four is your language. On the GUI screen, four of these are visible. On the GUI screen, four of these points are visible, but on the Fury screen, if you look at, only three points are visible. User ID, password, language. Only these three are applicable because your client ID, your client number. Is there in your URL link. If you see, in the URL link, you can find something called. Client is equal to hundred, login language is equal to English. This is defaulted in your URL link. This is defaulted in your URL link or you can create a URL link without client also. Without this also, you can put it. In that case, you will get the client number also here. If I remove it, for example, FLP. Continue. If you remove that URL link or in the URL link, if you remove the client number. On this screen, you will get client ID also wherein you will have to put client one hundred, client two hundred. But in the real time, we don't put logon pad with client number. You will be bookmarking your logon pad. With the client number so that whenever you click on that URL link, by default, you will be accessed. By default, you will be able to open it. If I go to here, if I paste that URL link here, if I press enter. Click on advanced. This message is coming because this server is not whitelisted. In this system, when you are working in any project, these messages will not come. Because in your project, your network team will whitelist this IP address. When they whitelist the IP address, these warnings will not come. It will be added to the trusted network. Click on proceed. When you click on proceed, this is how you are able to say it. You need to put your user ID, your password. Login language is by default English, but in case. If you wanted to look at the total SAP in a different language, this login language will work same like your phone language. In the phone also, before you set up, you can choose the language. If you choose the language English. Total content on the phone, only the standard content provided by the phone will be updated in English. Whatever you type, you can type in any language. But the predefined content from your mobile phone will be converted to the respective language. Similarly, the total screen of SAP will be appeared in the respective language, whatever you select. Majorityly, we will be using English language only, but keep in your mind, user ID, password, language, client number is mandatory. Now, when you are talking about here, client number is based on. Let's go to Excel sheet. Client number is based on your development, quality, production. Development, quality, production is nothing but. Development, quality, production is nothing but your system landscape. Is nothing but system landscape. As a FICO consultant, right from day one, you have to keep in your mind. SAP means development, quality, production. You have to always be very specific. Whether to log into development, whether to log into quality, whether to log into production, for which purpose you will go to what system. Why I should go to development? Why I should go to quality? Why I should go to production? What I will do in development? What I will do in quality? What I will do in production? Don't think everything is SAP FICO only. I can go to any system. No, you cannot do it. You should have a clear understanding. When, why, what activities you will perform in development and in quality and then in production system. For example, client ID, you are going to put this hundred here. Based on. Landscape. And then purpose. Purpose of work. Straight away, you cannot decide. Straight away, you cannot decide. These are all predefined. These client numbers, system landscape is a setup by a consultant called Basis. The way you have SAPFI, the way you have SAPCO, in the similar way, there is one more module called Basis. Basis consultant or the system administrator will set up the client, will set up the system landscape. And then they will share us with all the details to set up in our SAP. Okay, once your SAP is installed or license is implemented, you need to make sure the basis consultant will create the system setup. They will share all the system landscape detail, meaning. How many development clients are created, how many quality clients are created, how many production clients are created, we need to make sure. Accordingly, we have to ensure that the. Details are provided with the remaining team or the rest of the team, meaning the project team members of different module consultants. You need to put this. As an example, I put hundred here. Next one, user ID. For example, I am writing my user ID here, but when you are in a project, your user ID may be different. When you are in a project, your user ID may be different. It is not like this. Point number one. You may be having your employee IDs as your user ID or any. First, last name combination. Or any logic. Any logic may be there. This is again decided by your basis consultant. Your administrator or your project team will decide how we are going to create the user ID. Majorityly. Employee ID will become the user ID. In most of the situations, employee ID will become the user ID. If I am an employee. I will be having an employee ID. For example, my employee ID is two double one, three hundred. Or my employee ID is one, two, three, four, five. My user ID is also one, two, three, four, five because my. Organization is using, employee ID is the same as my user ID. Why you need to know this? Tomorrow, what if somebody is asking you in your interview or anywhere that you are coming across? Where are you currently working? Everybody will tell I am currently working. Everybody will tell I am currently working in XYZ project. I am currently in support project. I am currently in support rollout, anything. What if somebody, what if somebody is asking you, what is your user ID in your current client system? All of a sudden, you should not be blank. When somebody is asking, what is your user ID in your current system, in your current project, don't be blank. Don't tell answer which will give unnecessary doubts to the other person. Tell straight away. Your employee ID or whatsoever. Nobody is going to verify whether your user ID is correct or not, but please make sure. When somebody is asking, not necessary somebody need to ask, but it is necessary for you to know. Don't think that when you are practicing, every day you may be logging into SAP with your ID, your name. But from project to project, company to company, these things will get changed. How your user IDs will be created, you should be aware of it. No surprise, in your interview, somebody may ask you this question. Because of your answer, you may get caught. No surprise. Meaning you cannot imagine, you cannot think what kind of questions people might ask you in your interview or in any situation. Since you are an experienced candidate in SAP FICO, you should talk, you should. Understand, you should convince people like you are an experienced candidate only right from day one. Okay, and then the password. Password, as you know, it is confidential for everybody, even in my situation, my password is confidential. But you need to make sure for the password, there is a password policy. In every organization, there is a password policy. When you are logging into the training system, there is no such thing. But when you are in a project, every project in every SAP, they will have a password policy, meaning it should be minimum. Similarly, whenever you create any Gmail ID, any other ID, when you set a password, system will tell it should be minimum six character. Minimum one uppercase should be there, minimum one special character should be there, minimum one numeric number should be there. Like this, even in SAP, you will have the logic, meaning it should be minimum, minimum six digit in length. Minimum eight digits in length. It should contain one uppercase, one special character, one numeric value. Others, can you please go on mute? Okay. Right. So you need to make sure, based on your organization, you need to understand what is the password policy. It may be six digit, it may be eight digit, it may be ten digit and every three months, you need to make sure your password is changed. And you will be having, you will be receiving automatic email confirmation, automatic account detection. Or automatic password change notifications on your screen. Dhiraj, can you please go on mute? So we need to make sure the password policy, whatever is there. You can hear me now, right?
Yes, sir.
We need to make sure password policy, whatever is there in your client or in your organization, you need to follow it. Just like that, even when you are using SAP, keep in your mind, whatever you are doing in your practice may not be. Exactly the way you are doing it in the real environment, it will subject to change. Depending on the organization, depending on the project. Don't keep things in your mind as it is blindly. Know the fundamentals first. If you know the fundamentals first, you will practically relate, okay, for the practice purpose, I am doing like this. In the real environment, in the project, based on the company, this may be in different ways. Otherwise, everything will be surprised. Right from SAP logon pad, you will find changes when you get a job. You are not supposed to find changes. Instead, you should find, yes, all these things I am already aware of it. This is the way I practiced, this is the way I understood SAP. Now, it is the similar way which is used in the project where I am going to work. Then you will feel more comfortable, then you will feel more confident and that is very, very important. Otherwise. You will be feel, you will be feeling more uncomfortable, you will be feeling unsecure, you will be feeling scared. You do not know when, who will ask what. These kind of situations you need to avoid in future after getting a job. For that situation to happen, right from day one, you should put your efforts in a proper way. It is not that straight away you will log into SAP, you will create all the configuration, that is not going to help you practically. Becoming a successful FICO consultant. Okay, now, this is your password and then language. By default, we will be using English here. Language, by default, we will be using English, but you can also use any other language. Now, from the Indian language, Hindi is supported in SAP. You can open your entire SAP in Hindi language. Hindi is supported in SAP, but we don't use it. But some companies, especially. All the government companies, most of the government companies are using SAP in India. Take any central government, state government company, most of the government entities are working on SAP only. Now, this is what the login details that you need to understand if you are logging in through GUI or if you are logging in through Fury. Now, if you look at Fury screen, this is your Fury screen. Here, you need to put your user ID, password. I will put my user ID here. I will put my password here. Now, remember. Remember, you have to log into SAP GUI. At the same time, SAP Fury, you should know what do you mean by Fury. Nowadays, everybody will ask, do you have experience on SAP Fury? Reason, as I discussed, there are two points in SAP. Point number one, SAP ECC. Point number two, SAP S4HANA system. In SAP ECC, everything will be used on GUI. In SAP ECC, you will be using everything on GUI. In SAP S4HANA system, you can use GUI at the same time on the Fury application. The screen that you are able to see now is nothing but SAP Fury. SAP Fury will represent everything on the webpage. This is a webpage browser basically. The way you open Google or any other website, it is the same way. This because it is your web browser, Google Chrome. On the Google Chrome, I am able to open my SAP. Now, in ECC or in GUI, you need to open every screen with a transaction code. In ECC or in your GUI, you need to open every transaction with a T code. Here, no need to input, search any T code. You can search straight away with the transaction description or the transaction code. Or you will find a different catalogs here. You will find a different catalog here. You can click on any group that you can see on the top. For example. If I click on journal entries here. On the training environment, on the testing environment, these Fury links will be working slower, but in the real environment, this will be super fast. When I say it is a super fast, if you click on it, you will get the screen loaded there. There is no delay, there is no lag. If there is any slowness, if there is any delay. Immediately, we will be notifying the basis consultant or the network team. They will check why this system is working slow. They will immediately check whether there is a network problem whatsoever. They will fix it immediately. There is no point that your system is working slow, system is not work, not connecting and all. These problems will come only in the training environment. You should have a different mindset from the training environment. And how this is going to be working in a real environment. Don't assume that whatever you are looking, it is the same in the real environment. Things may be different. Wherever there are subjected to changes, I will explain you. Keep in your mind. Now, here, you can open any screen. Now, I am not. Necessarily giving any transaction code here. I can go and click on anything here. I can go, click on anything, wherever I click on the thing, system will open up. For example, if I click on post general journal interest. It will load and it displays the screen where I can enter my GL document posting. It will open the screen where I need to post my GL document screen. Likewise, on every screen. You will get the options to either enter the data or to display the data or to set up anything. Now, two points you need to understand here. Point number one, on your Fury screen, you can open entire GUI screen or you can open. Entire SAP traditional version. When I say SAP traditional version or SAP GUI, I am talking about it. Whatever the screen that you get it here, like your T codes and all, whatever is possible in GUI, hundred percent, everything you can open in SAP Fury. Meaning, you can do configuration also in your Fury screen. You can also perform configuration also on your Fury screen because you can open complete a GUI on the Fury screen. But whatever is possible in Fury may not be possible in your GUI because there are some transactions GUI based. There are some transactions Fury based. GUI based transactions. Fury based transactions. GUI based transactions. We can access. We can access through Fury also. Whatever is your GUI-based transaction, we can access this through Fury also. Whatever is Fury-based transaction, we cannot access through GUI. Meaning, whatever is possible in GUI is possible in Fury, whatever is possible only in Fury is not possible in GUI. Be very clear, GUI whatever you can do, you can do it on Fury screen. On Fury, whatever you can do, you may not be able to do it on GUI because some transactions are Fury exclusive. When we say some transactions are Fury exclusive, they will not be opened in your GUI. Okay, let me come out from this. They will not be opened in your GUI screen, it is the same thing, once you click on anything, when you are able to see the screen, it is the same thing what you can see on the SAP. Okay, let me close it and then come back to here. So first point, what we need to understand, you need to understand something called SAP landscape. When you are talking about SAP landscape or system landscape, development, quality, production, and you can log into SAP using GUI. You can also log into SAP using Fury. If you are using GUI, if you are using GUI, you can connect it through ACC system, you can also connect it through or connect it to S4HANA system. If you are using Fury, it is only S4HANA system because Fury is not applicable for GUI. Next thing, as a FICO consultant, you will be having access to development system, quality system, production system. Now, I am not talking about development client, quality client, production client, because even in the project, different people will be using different, different terminologies, you are not supposed to buy hard things. Just now, earlier I was talking about development client, now I am talking about a development system. Now I am talking about quality system, production system, either way, I am correct. When I say development client, I am correct, when I say development system, I am correct, when I say only development, I am correct. Because things may be used in different, different ways, depending on the person, depending on the organization, as a consultant, you have to be flexible. Don't tell that no according to me, client is the right word, only when you tell client, I will understand, if you tell system, I am confused, then you are not clear with the subject. Okay? Now you will have access to development, quality, production. Now, if I put few points here. Let me put SAP or development quality, production. Let me write, development, quality, production. Now I am not writing a complete word development, now I am not writing a complete word quality. Now I am not writing a complete word production. Instead, I am writing DEV, QAS, PRT. Because even in the project, you will be using the same terminology, dev system, QAS system, PRT system. Not everybody, every time will take a development, quality, production, instead they will write DEV, QAS, PRT. Now, within DEV, there are three partitions. When I say three partitions, one, two, let me put two more rows, I will put DEV, I will put DEV here. Now, in quality, there may be two partitions, let me put QAS. And in production, there is no partition, production is always a single client. When I am talking about DEV three times, I need to represent DEV three times with a unique client code. Now, DEV alone, I cannot put three, now this is a duplicate. If I put development three times, it's a straightforward duplicate because it is not having any unique record. Now, to make it unique, to make it unique, development followed by the client number, what I will put, I will say development hundred. I will say development hundred, then I will tell development development one ten, then I will say development one twenty. Or here I can say development two hundred also. It depends on the organization, not fixed. Based on the company, this may be different, but for now, you keep the same points, same numbers, whatever I am telling, as it is, we can talk to anybody. You can tell anybody in your previous project or in your current project, this is how client number was a setup. Remember, whenever I am talking about certain points and all, I may be representing most commonly used content, which, when you talk to somebody, nobody will tell you wrong. Okay, when you are talking about anything specific, wherein you work, you can use the same thing. If not, you have not worked before, you are not sure what is client, which number to be taken, you don't put your intelligence here, don't change hundred to three hundred, hundred to triple one, triple five, your lucky numbers and all. Strictly remember the same number wherever I am writing. Wherever you can put your own thing, I will clearly mention, here you can replace anything. When I am not mentioning, you can replace anything, please strictly follow what I am writing here. Development hundred, development one ten.
Yes.
Others, please go on.
Sir, I have one doubt.
Now, I will, I will take all your doubts separately.
Yes.
Okay. Now, in the development, you have three server, three client, development hundred, development one ten, development one twenty, or development two hundred. Now, you should always represent the same number to whosoever you are talking with. Whether you are talking to somebody in your new project, or you are talking to your friend or to anybody, please make sure development followed by the client number always to create the impact, don't simply tell development. In development, which development, there are three developments, you have to be very specific. Now, similarly, when you are talking about quality, I may say in quality also too, quality hundred, quality two hundred. When I say production, I may say production one hundred. When I say, I may say production one hundred. Now, these many servers, clients that you will be having in your project, wherever you work tomorrow, wherever you join as a FICO consultant, you will be having these many client. Now, from here, you are a FICO consultant. We are all FICO consultants, let me highlight. This is for FICO consultant. All these screens, all these servers will be accessible or will be used by SAP FICO consultant, this one ten is not used by FICO consultant. This is not used by FICO consultant, this is used by technical consultant in short ABAP. You know that there is something called ABAP module? This ABAP will be using, or the technical team in short, will be using development one ten server. Otherwise, the remaining servers, you will be using all the ways. Now, when it comes to SAP FICO general understanding, when we say, when it comes to SAP FICO general understanding, we are all talking about configurations. When it comes to general understanding related to SAP FICO, we will all be representing a configuration according to you, according to me. According to XYZ, SAP FICO means configuration. Now, there are various servers, various systems here. Everything is a separate independent client. Everything is a separate independent client, meaning data is different in every system. What you will do, configuration, you cannot do everywhere. Configuration, you cannot do everywhere. Let me put this here. Here, configuration is possible. In development hundred, configuration is possible. In development one ten, configuration is not possible. In development one ten, configuration not possible, same like everywhere. Though there are so many systems, though there are so many server, configuration is possible only in one system. You cannot do configuration in every system. That is the reason you need to remember. You should not blindly go ahead with the configuration, as you can see, there are how many systems? There are six servers here. There are six client, out of six client, you can do configuration only in a single client. Out of six, only a single client will have the configuration, we are all aware, SAP will work based on the configuration. SAP will work based on the configuration. Configuration, in the other words, is nothing but setting, you need to do the initial setup. Even if you buy a new mobile phone, even if you buy a new computer whatsoever, you need to perform the initial setting, initial setup. Without the initial setting, setting or initial setup, anything is not ready to be used. Even in SAP, it is the same thing, SAP is not a ready-to-use application, this has to be set up. You have to do the initial setup and then you will have to do the business processes setup or business requirement setup. To do it, you will have to maintain the configuration. All the setup, all the settings are done by way of configuration in SAP. To do the configuration, not every system is configurable. Not every system, not every client is configurable, only development or the two, development one hundred is configurable. This is also called as golden client. People also represent this as golden client, only the development hundred is configurable, other than development hundred, whatever you have is non-configurable system. When we say non-configurable, if you maintain a setting here, your setting will remain only in development hundred. Development one ten, you don't get your setting, development two hundred, you don't get your setting, quality, production, your settings will not come. Then how my settings will come? Your settings will come based on the TR movement. Based on TR movement, there is one more term that you need to understand, called as TR movement or transport request movement. This TR movement is used. When you are talking about TR movement, this is one client to other client basically. One client to other client. Configuration copy. You are just going to copy the configuration from one client to another client. When you are talking about client, you are not talking about your company name. You are talking about development, quality, production. Things will look simple, but they are used in the similar way in different context. They are used in similar way in different context. Based on the scenario, based on the situation, you need to understand, that is very, very important. Meaning, you cannot buy hard things. You cannot buy hard things, you cannot just like that mug up thing, you need to understand logically, you need to understand conceptually, else your understanding will reveal all your secrets. When it is your secret, keep it as your secret only, don't reveal your secrets to anybody. When I am talking about secret, it includes everything, most of the things are part of our secret. Let it be your secret, don't let the other person know your secret because of your behavior, because of your talking, do not let other person know your secret, that you do not know anything, that is the secret, that you do not have experience, you do not know much about SAP, that's a secret. Who is asking you the question, do you know everything on a scale of one to hundred, how many rating you will put, nobody will put. Because everybody knows the fact. Not everybody knows SAP FICO, this is based on the requirement, anybody will have to work. Though you have twenty years of experience, certain situations are new to you. Though you have one year of experience, certain things are very easy for you. It is mixed. All you need to do is look at from the business point of view, think from a consulting point of view, that's it. You will get to know the solution for most of the things. Now here, when you are talking about configuration, you are not configuring in every system, keep in your mind. Configuration is allowed, configuration is possible, only in development hundred system, not in every system. Meaning, configuration, though you have six system, you are not doing six time, it's a one-time config. It is not six-time configuration, single-time configuration, five times you are going to copy the config using TR movement or using TR. When you are talking about TR movement, there are two types of TR. One is your customizing request. Two is your workbench request. One is your customizing request and the other one is your workbench request, these two types of TR you need to remember. Okay? And now, as a FICO consultant, whatever the configuration, whatever the settings that you maintain, majoritily, your configuration will trigger a customizing request. Majoritily, your configuration will trigger customizing request, workbench request is usually for the technical related changes. All the functional changes will trigger customizing request, all the technical related changes will trigger workbench request. Now, how you are going to do this TR? Meaning, you are talking about one client to another client. Now, this is based on two logics, this is based on two points here, when you are talking about based on two point. Two things that we have listed here. We have listed configuration copy. We were talking about configuration copy, here there are two points again, this is one is within client. Another one is between client. Now, again I am talking about client here. Again I am talking about client, here when I am talking about client, I am representing development, QAS, PRT. When I am talking about client, I am representing these words here. Now, according to this, according to this, my situation, my scenario is development to development, this is your within client. Okay, development to development is within client. And when you are talking about between client, this is your development to QAS or PRT. Development to development is nothing but within client, development to quality or development to production is nothing but between client. For this, you will be using SC C1 T-code. And here, you will be using SE zero one, SE zero nine, STMS underscore import. These are the T-codes that we will be using here. Why you need to know these things? These are very, very important. Why you need to know these things? These are very, very important because these are all related to configuration. They are all related to configuration, we all more focused, more interested on configuration on every topic. But the moment somebody is putting your question, how do you copy your configuration from development to quality? Some people, they do not even know what is configuration, how configuration is copied, what is TR? What is customizing request, what is workbench request, how do you move within the client, how do you move between the client? Though you know the configuration, you do not know how your configuration is moved. Because we are not thinking to that extent, we are thinking only to the extent of what is my configuration document? How do I configure this system? How do I test it in the system? That's it, over, I am good with my FICO. That is not going to work out, that is not the way SAP FICO works in any a project. When we know that is not the way how we are going to work in any project, you are not supposed to remember those points in your mind. Before you do configuration in SAP, these points must be registered in your mind, so that whenever you do any configuration, you are clear with how and what you are going to do. So here, when you are talking about within the client, you are talking about development to development. In development, we were talking about, there are two things. In development, we were talking about two thing, development hundred, development one twenty. Development hundred, development one twenty, because development one ten is not for a FICO consultant. As a FICO consultant, you are working on development hundred, development one twenty only two. So here, this is in short, client copy, development hundred to development one twenty, simple. Client copy means development hundred to development one twenty or development two hundred. When you are talking about this, this is again same thing. When you're talking about this, this is again same thing. Development hundred. Why I am specifically writing the development? And quality, whatever you have, quality hundred. Or two hundred or production hundred. Depending on the structure, depending on the landscape, whatever is the setup by the basis consultant. Accordingly, you are going to do it. Now here, we are talking about everywhere, whether it is within the client or it is between the client, we are talking. From development to the target system. Your source is always, your source is always a development reason if you go top. If you go top, you have clearly listed, configuration is possible only in development. If I scroll up. Now you can see, development hundred is where you have listed, configuration is possible. Only here, configuration is possible and here and all, configuration not possible. Here, configuration not possible. You cannot configure the system. Meaning, this is a modifiable system. These are non-modifiable system. This is your. Modifiable. System. Or client. This is non-modifiable. These are non-modifiable. Modifiable means where you can make the configuration. Non-modifiable means where you cannot make the configuration. Right? Tomorrow you may be hearing the same terms, client is modifiable, client is non-modifiable. When somebody is asking, what do you mean by modifiable client, non-modifiable client? How will you do the configuration in non-modifiable client? You should know. In the non-modifiable client, we don't do any configuration. We will do the configuration in the modifiable client and then we will transport the configuration to the non-modifiable client. What are these non-modifiable client? These non-modifiable clients can be development, testing client, quality client, production client. Modification with respect to configuration. Modification with respect to configuration, these terms slowly we need to understand. When you are able to understand these terminologies slowly, you will feel comfortable, okay, all these points I need to know, I need to be aware of. Only then it is practically possible for me to relate various points right from your first setting in SAP. Whether you do a basic setting in SAP or a complicated setting in SAP, logic, fundamental, concept, scenario will remain the same. Right from the beginning, when you are adding all these points and doing the configuration. You will be more comfortable, you will be more confident with respect to your system. So that there is no point of any confusion. Tomorrow, when you join an organization as a consultant, you don't have to worry about anything. There is no point that you are scared, somebody is asking you to move your TR, somebody is asking you to check or make any config. There is no point, you will get confused. Otherwise, we will unnecessarily get confusion. You do not know whether you can ask or you cannot ask. You cannot Google also, you cannot ask also and then you cannot move forward also. You will be stuck in a situation where you can do nothing there. These situations, right from the beginning, we need to address and then we need to avoid. Wherever possible, we need to avoid slowly. As I said, overnight, things are not going to happen. Right from the beginning, when we start putting our effort, slowly, slowly you will gain confidence. Initially, you will get all confusions only. I know that first one month or approximately three weeks, it takes for everybody to feel comfortable. First three weeks, forget about your feeling confident, comfortable, it is not going to happen. Especially the points that I am going to talk will not make you feel comfortable for the first three weeks or the first one month. That is the reason I am not counting your first one month in your duration. Because this first one month, we are making sure that we feel comfortable. With the system, we are all on the same page, we all have the same mindset to understand the system. Then when we talk about the practical SAP FICO configuration, business process scenario requirement. Everybody will be able to understand in a. In a conceptual manner, meaning you feel comfortable, you feel confident. For that to happen, we need to put a little extra effort, though it is difficult, though it is confusing. Though it is not getting into your mind, though it is going out from your mind straight forward. Even if you are able to understand the ten percent of what I am telling, talking now, I am fine with it. Because this is not something that I told, it is over. This is just the beginning of your SAP FICO. If you do not know these things, forget about SAP FICO. Meaning, we are understanding the points wherein there is no point you say that I do not know. And these points will not be understood in one go. It takes time. Because day in, day out that you work on SAP FICO, these points, whatever we listed, whatever we talked are mandatory. Every day, these are mandatory. Every day, if you work for ten years, ten years, these points are mandatory for you on a daily basis. So as you understand these same things in a repeated manner with a different, different example in different scenarios. You will feel comfortable, you will feel confident. Slowly, you will gain confidence, but don't think too much that I am not able to understand whether this is right or not. I am not explaining in such a way that you will feel confident in one go. Keep in your mind. I am not explaining in such a way, you feel comfortable, you understand in one go. Because if you feel comfortable now, tomorrow you will feel confused. We will have confusions first, we'll have clarifications first, then we will eliminate all the confusion. All the clarification, we will fix only the comfort, confidence, clarity. So that tomorrow, when you're in any organization, you're talking to anybody, I want you to feel confident. Okay? Now. Alright, let me stop this here for now. The remaining portion, we will talk in the tomorrow's session. Once we complete the basic fundamentals that are required for us to know from the SAP point of view. Then we will be talking, we will be starting our regular discussion from the accounting basic convert. Meaning, we will understand what is debit, what is credit. From there, we will start our journey. Debit, credit, journal entry, all these things we will discuss, we will understand conceptually. We will make sure we are all able to make our own journal entries, we are all able to make simple, simple accounting scenarios. Like purchases, sales, capital, investment, loans, creditor, debtor, all these things, we will recollect everything. So that we feel, yes, I am now able to make my own accounting entries. I am able to understand accounting impact, business impact, financial impact. Then we will step into SAP. When we step into SAP, every point that you are doing right from your company code. You should know why you are creating a company code. You should know why you are creating only one company code. If you are operating in one country, you are having branches in twenty-five cities, you are having branches in twenty-five states. You are not going to create a twenty-five company codes. You are creating a single company code. Why? How you will decide whether to have single company code or to have multiple company codes? Who decides it? How you decide it? All these points you need to understand, when you are configuring a system in a project. What will be the company code naming convention that you will take? When we are practicing, we will take anything, A, B, C, D, X, Y, Z, one, two, three, four, anything. But when you are in a project. Wherein you need to configure the system, how will we configure the system? Are we configuring the system with company code as one thousand, two thousand, three thousand like this? Or A, B, C, D, X, Y, Z, A C ten, B C ten like our own? What is the standard practice? What is the best practice? Which one you adopted? Which one you will adopt if you are in a project tomorrow? When you have all these points in your mind, when you are creating a company code randomly, blindly, you will not create it. It is better you don't do the configuration, you don't do the practice, instead of doing the practice configuration in a wrong manner. Wherein it is very, very difficult for you to rectify that tomorrow because you have to repair your SAP understanding. Don't get to a situation wherein you have to repair your understanding, wherein you have to repair your knowledge. Don't repair it. Do it in such a way that there is no point of repairs tomorrow. Repair, I mean to say, you understand, but what you know is not correct. Then you need to understand it in a right way, for which in your mind, whatever is currently there, if that is not correct, if that is not clear con- con- You are not confident on it, you need to make sure you are clear, you are confident on it. Only at that situation, we will start the config. And it is very simple to do the configuration, no complication at all. Provided you know all the basic fundamental, you will find it very simple, very easy. That configuration is very simple. Now I am able to understand how to configure the system. Blindly, I will not configure, even if I give you the configuration document, you will cross-question me, please tell me the scenario, only then I will do the config. Now what you will do, you may be asking me, sir, please tell me this configuration document, show me the configuration screenshot. But once we actually start the configuration, you will realize, document is not going to help. In any project, document will not help. In any project, requirement is the key for you to start your config. And how you are going to do it and all, you need to know because in your project, you will be configuring all alone, nobody will sit with you. When I say you will configure all alone, nobody will sit with you. If that is the situation you should have. If there is a situation, you should have clear understanding wherein you are in a position to configure the system confidently. And talk to your manager or your other consultants with confidence right from day one. If tomorrow you are joining the SAP FICO job as a consultant. Tomorrow, if somebody wants you to do the configuration, tomorrow if somebody wants you to work on any ticket, anything, please make sure you are confident enough. Right from day one, because that is what the trend is now. The days are gone where you will get the job. After joining the company, after during completing your BGV, after getting your laptop, after getting your access. After you are allocated to the project, you will start working. That trend is now gone. Right from day one, people want you to work. Today you join, from today onwards, they will give you assignments, from today onwards, they want you to start contributing in the project or start working in the project. Forget about KT, somebody will give me knowledge transfer, somebody will give me the document material, don't think about them at all. If somebody is giving, it is okay. If somebody is not giving, you are an experienced candidate, you need to work right from day one, keep in your mind. If these points are not in your mind, your understanding, your thought process, your thinking, your imagination may be different, that will become a dream. Come out of your dreams, be in reality, what is going to happen when you get a job, right from day one. Keeping this point in your mind, put your effort. Remember, this is not going to be simple, straightforward. Things will be a little tricky, little confusing. Don't worry about it. I am here with you to clarify all the confusions whatever you get. And everything that I am discussing will be discussed, will be explained from my side minimum two, two, three times. You don't need to ask me. I will tell you two, two, three times every topic. And every time I will tell you in a different way, every time I will give you different examples so that you will feel. Points in such a way that, okay, when I'm talking in a different way, you are able to understand or not. It's not that you are listening to the same song every day. You have to understand the subject in such a way that though the other person is talking in a different way, with your knowledge, with your understanding. Make sure you are able to connect to the point what they are trying to convey. Tomorrow, when you're talking to the user client, don't expect they will talk to you according to the definition, description and all. They may talk in detailed manner, they may talk in very shortcut, they may talk with some minor mistakes there. But as a consultant, your knowledge, your understanding should help you to get their point in a right way. For this to happen, you need to have a little more patience right from the beginning. Only then it is possible. This is not about completing the configuration, completing the course. This is about understanding the knowledge. Understanding the concept, making sure that you feel confident, comfortable. This takes a little time than what you are anticipating, than what you are expecting. This is not practically going to take place of four months. This will be beyond four months for you to feel comfortable, confident. Accordingly, you please put your effort. Don't be in a hurry, learn with peace of mind. As I said, your training will continue until you get the job. It is not that three months batch is over, course is over, you will be with me until you get the job in SAP FICO. I'll give you the training, I'll explain you everything until you become a consultant. Don't be in a hurry that I am not able to understand, I am backlog. No worries, you will again attend the next batch when I start. But keep in your mind. Mark yourself as you are good at this topic only when you feel that you are comfortable. Not when I complete the topic, when you complete your practice, when you feel comfortable, confident, till that time, according to you, that topic is not completed. You can always raise a hand towards me stating, you did not teach me this, I am not comfortable with it. Please ask me again, I will explain you again. I don't want you to feel you already explained, it is my task to complete it, not, not, nothing like that. You are not able to understand, if you are not able to feel comfortable, please ask me again. I will explain you again in one of the sessions or we will have our session in which I will clarify. How to rectify your misunderstandings, how to rectify your conceptual errors and all. We will discuss in detail so that you will feel comfortable, you will develop that thought process. As a consultant, what we need to do, how we need to think, slowly you will develop, that is more and more important. If that understanding is there, if that mindset you are able to develop, you are not dependent on anybody, not even on me. Tomorrow, anything that you want to learn, that you want to know, I want to make sure you are not dependent on anybody, including me. Tomorrow, you should not be dependent on me. Tomorrow, I want you to feel comfortable, confident, yes, I can learn on my own, I can manage. That confidence is what you need to gain, for that only you are paying me money. Not for not, you are not paying money that I will show you all the configuration, for that you are not paying money, you are paying money. To gain confidence, to feel comfortable with the system subject. Right? Once that is there. Even if I do not to teach certain topics, you will be able to learn on your own because you have that confidence now. You have that understanding that yes, I know the requirement, I can work on it. Tomorrow, when you are in a project, you may be required or you may be asked to work on anything, though you do not know anything about it. In that situation, you need to know how do I move forward? How do I proceed? How do I start my practice? How do I explore this system? How do I understand the requirement and all? These points you have to learn here so that tomorrow when you are in a project. Whatever the assignment is coming in your way, you will be feeling comfortable, confident, at least to talk to your project manager, to talk to your user. If this is not there, you are silent because you do not know anything, it's not going to make you feel comfortable in the project. Every day is a threatening day for you. Every day you will be scared, you will be afraid. I don't know, I am not able to perform, I don't know what will happen. You are not supposed to be like that. You should have the confidence that yes, I can manage. As I said, nobody knows everything, including me, I also do not know everything, I also know little things in SAP. But I am confident, anything that comes in my way, I can clear it, I can work on it. It's only because I know the subject, I have that confidence, I know how to understand the requirement, how to put it in SAP. Same points, same logics, when you are able to understand, slowly you also feel comfortable, confident. That confidence level is what is more important. Once you have it, subject, topic, configuration is nothing for you. Alright. Pardon, let me stop this here now. We will do the continuation part in the tomorrow's session. Okay? So we'll have this session at the same time tomorrow morning. Bye.